This is the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, November the 5th, 2019. Welcome to the meeting. We're glad that you're here. We're going to have the invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Timothy Larkin.
That's right. Holy Father, we thank you for this state. We thank you for your greatness. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you, Lord, for your love that's unconditional. We thank you, Lord God, for all that you have done, all that you are doing. We pray for those who are here. We ask that you bless them, keep them. We thank you, Lord, for our opportunity to serve those that we are elected to serve. We pray, Lord, for every person who is on this body. We ask you to give us direction and wisdom. Father, we ask that you bless this city, this state, and this country. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would please turn to the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due and justice for all.
Rock home.
Mr. McGimmie.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here, teacher.
Mr. Crane.
It was tough.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Approve the minutes of October 15th, 2019, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it pop up, counsel?
No.
It's got a moment sending. Let's try that again.
Here it is. All right, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have any add-ons?
No, sir.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Comments from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, ceremonial matters. Shane Cheatham is here from Bossier Parish School Board. Shane, welcome. Think you'd like to speak to us?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The president of the Bossier Parish School Board, huh?
Mayor Walker and President Irwin and board and city councilman. I'm here today on the behalf of the Bossier Parish School Board as president of the Bossier Parish School Board. We just wanted to take a second today to thank you for the streetlight upgrades that y'all did at Green Acres and Russian and Curve for us. And I know you'll partner with AEP Swebco on that. But I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I did want to come by and just tell you that we appreciate y'all and thank y'all for doing that.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Shane. And we appreciate the cooperation and working together with the school board. Thank you for coming. Now we have Stacy Brown with the Shreveport Bossier Convention and Tourist Bureau. You have a report. Welcome, Stacy.
Good afternoon. I was telling Councilman Larkin.
Welcome to our annual mid-year report. Welcome to our annual mid-
There we go. We can start it now.
I had to cue it up.
Okay.
Did you get that from Scott or what?
Welcome.
See, your lips were moving.
I'm trying that Ben Trilquist thing. I was telling Councilman Larkin, I thought maybe those two had done something at school that y'all were having to separate them. And then with Mr. Irwin.
We need to, though. That's why they have me sitting beside the city attorney.
I felt like there was probably a reason for that.
That's why they have me between him and them.
That buffer. There you go. Well, I appreciate y'all allowing me to come before you today to give you an update on tourism and talk to you a little bit about our budget and plans for 2020. So you have before you our budget book and our business plan. So they look very similar, but one is night and one is day, so you can tell which one is which. But I wanted to thank you also for your appointee, Ashley Davis. She could not be here with us today, but she does represent you very well on the Convention and Tourist Bureau Board. In fact, she is one of our officers, so we appreciate her. All right, Phyllis, if you want to start that.
... report for 2019. Shreveport, Bossier is among the top three most visited destinations in Louisiana. People come here for the Cajun and Texan culture, homestyle comfort foods that we celebrate in our official meal of North Louisiana, and time-honored traditions and culture that are always on full display at our year-round festivals. From Mardi Gras to Mudbugs and Sunflowers to Christmas, there's always a reason to celebrate in the sister cities. Gaming, craft breweries, family-friendly attractions, and the lure of outdoor sports and recreational activities add to the many reasons visitors love us and locals support our industry.
Still not convinced? Then consider this. A report published by Longwoods International titled "A Day Visitor Research Report" estimated that 8.6 million people visited our community in 2018.
You know, in the first half of this year, we hosted 122 conferences, which produced over 30,000 hotel rooms, which brought to town more than 139,000 people. These conventioners came from almost every state in various countries around the world. Just just a few of the bigger conferences that we hosted in 19. Louisiana Conference of United Methodist Church, the 46th Annual Louisiana Fire Chiefs Association. One we're really proud of is the National Governors Association and the Community College Cyber Summit, to name a few.
The Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission is so proud to have teamed up with the Shreveport, Bossier City, Caton, Bossier Parish communities to bring incredible sporting events in 2019 to our regions such as Showtime Boxing, the LHSA State Wrestling, the Louisiana State Coaches Convention, Kayak Bass Fishing Nationals, the Red River Balloon Rally, and the FIVB Women's Volleyball Olympic Qualifier.
In the first six months of 2019, we've hosted 62 sports events that have generated nearly 20,000 hotel rooms and attracted 142,000 sports participants and fans. Leisure visitation is and will continue to be our biggest piece of the tourism pie. Hotel occupancy is pacing strong. Hotel overnight stays year-to-date is 65.8%.
Our strong regional marketing campaigns target drive markets and focus on food, festivals, and fun. Our 2019 Mardi Gras and summer campaigns have yielded nearly 32,000 trackable booked hotel room nights for our community.
Yet our story doesn't end there. Content marketing continues to be one of our strongest tools to engage people and make them aware of our communities. Our videos, blogs, news releases, brochures, websites, and other marketing collateral highlight our community's big personality, southern charm, hospitality, flavor, and diversity.
Our videos have been viewed nearly 247,000 times, and our blogs on 20by49.com have been read close to 65,000 times. Because people can't get enough of our food content, our most popular blog written in 2018 continues to be read and shared by our visitors even today. I mean, who doesn't want to learn more about those stuffed shrimp? Which I might add, were originally created right here in Shreveport, Bossier.
Stories like Shreveport-style stuffed shrimp and Shreveport, Bossier's local food culture continue to be consumed and shared by the travel media. In the first six months of 2019 alone, we've hosted more than two dozen visiting travel writers. Here's what some of them had to say about Shreveport, Bossier.
"I love the everybody-welcome atmosphere of the Mardi Gras celebrations in the Shreveport, Bossier City area," wrote Elaine Warner for the Dallas Morning News. "If you're lucky, a visit to Shreveport, Bossier unfolds like a Steinbeck novel. You're likely to meet some of those strange and intensely interesting people falling in love with its edges," wrote Cynthia Drake for the Austin American Statesman. "Strawn's Eat Shop is just a down-home friendly place to eat," says manager Angela Irwin, a 17-year veteran. "Handed-down recipes, great employees, people love it," wrote Donald Leibenson for Thrillist.com.
We've been able to generate more than $18.7 million in public relations coverage. That means for all the stories written, television and radio mentions, and internet articles that featured Shreveport, Bossier, it would have cost us more than $18 million in advertising dollars if we'd had to pay for it ourselves.
To keep our forward momentum, our goals are simple. Continue to work with our community partners to showcase our assets, give us a competitive edge, and appeal to a diverse audience of visitors. Strengthen our customer service and guests' experiences for our leisure, convention, group, sports, and international visitors. Provide research-driven strategies that address a destination master plan, future branding, product development, and other enhancements that benefit our residents and visitors.
Shreveport, Bossier has been, is, and will continue to be a top destination for visitors from all around the nation and the world.
So before you, in the business plan, we have our goals, objectives, and strategies outlined. If you'll turn to page four and five, you'll see several of our goals that are for the staff and board. Goals number one, two, and three are our big community overarching vision includes destination assessment, destination plan, community engagement, branding, future product development, and a feasibility study for a multi-sports complex. So this last year, we completed Destination Assessment, or Destination Next is what it was called, and that really looked at our community. It assessed our strength for the community's support of tourism, as well as informing the public on private sectors on how we can collaborate to grow tourism in our area. Some of the things that were identified were two key challenges that you have helped work on as well. Those two key challenges that they identified were litter and crime. So litter is one that we've taken on as the hospitality industry and worked together to have some special litter cleanup days. In fact, one of those was yesterday. We had some attractions, some hotels, some restaurants, the Louisiana Boardwalk and others that got out yesterday and did some special cleanups to help clean up those areas that are most often seen by visitors. But you have also partnered with Bossier Parish and the Bossier Sheriff's Office to work on Keep Bossier Beautiful. So that's another way we can work together to help beautify our area and clean up, not only for our local residents, but for our visitors as well. The crime area, one of the things we've worked on is a crisis communications plan. So when a crisis or an event happens in our area, we think of our local people immediately, and how do we communicate with them? What we sometimes forget is we actually have thousands of visitors in our community every single day. And how do we communicate with them in the event of a crisis in our community? So working together with the city officials, parishes, sheriff's offices, Office of Community Preparedness, we've been talking, how do we affect that? How do we get that information out? How do we work together to make sure those messages are going at the right time to the right people? Next steps are working together this next year on social media strategies. As we all know, social media is something that everyone revolves around in some way or another. If you're not the one looking at it, you're hearing about others looking at it. So social media is a key way to communicate with our locals as well as visitors in the case of a crisis. So we're working on that together with the other public information officers to see how do we do that best as a community. Through programs such as these, we are working to develop our destination by taking an active role in support of our infrastructure and strengthening the participation with attractions, hotels, restaurants, and retail. We appreciate your commitment, too. The CenturyLink Center is one of those that you have definitely made a tremendous commitment to, and it looks fabulous. Not only is it a great venue for our local people to go to, it's also a great venue to bring outsiders to. Just this last year, or just earlier this year, we hosted, with your assistance, the United States Volleyball Olympic Trials. We could not have hosted that without the CenturyLink Center. Not only the facility itself, but their staff. They did an outstanding job, and because of that facility, they said, you know what, we would love to come back to your community. So most of the people that were in the stands actually were from outside of our market. Many of them flew in specifically for that event. So it's hard to put a dollar figure on some events like that that not only bring in those direct dollars, but also indirect, because that also included coverage not just nationally, but internationally as well. So looking for events and things that we can tie together to utilize those facilities, such as the CenturyLink, is very important. So one key division of the Bureau is, of course, the Sports Commission, and I'd like to thank Councilman Bubba Williams, as well as Clay, is Clay here? There's Clay Bohannon, on the Sports Commission Advisory Board. They do a fantastic job of working with us to identify potential sports, to look at those and evaluate the ones that come to us that we are looking at to make sure that we are providing a great return on investment for those dollars that are invested into the Sports Commission. If you'll pick up the budget book, you can see on page two of that our overall budget. We are projecting to end up this year just a little bit higher than what we budgeted on revenue, and we project to come in a little bit under on expenses. Next year, we're projecting again to have another slight increase in revenue and keep our expenses in line to have that balanced budget. We are very conscious of being very fiscally sound. We did set aside some money last year, so if we have an opportunity like the Miss USA or other things that come along, we have some funds available to be able to accomplish those things. So we appreciate all that you do here at the city. The infrastructure and support of tourism is tremendous and want to thank you for that, but also let you know that we are here to assist you as well. I'd like to welcome you to our open house on Friday, December 6th. You'll be getting an invitation to that as well. So again, thank you, Mayor Walker, President Irwin, and council. I appreciate you for allowing me to come before you today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Stacy, I'm looking at the report, and I've only had it a few minutes. Maybe I'm not interpreting it right. But I'm looking at the ending fund balance for 19, and it looks like in 20, it's going down by about 10%.
It is going down a little bit. We are utilizing some of those funds. One of the things that we've done is work on projects within our budget. We do have funds set aside. For instance, this year, we needed to make some capital improvements to our building. We have not needed to pull funds for that. We have enough in our fund balance to be able to accomplish that without pulling that.
So the increase in spending is not recurring expenses. It's capital, so.
Yes.
It's not going to be as sustainable, sustainable to do that forever.
Right.
So.
So we have funds set aside for that capital. If we needed to, we could transfer that, but we're able to do that within our means.
Any questions, council? Well, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, committee reports. Bossier Arts Council, Jeremy Hefner, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. All right, I believe all of you have a copy of the quarterly report. I'm just going to go over some of the events that we've had, some things we have upcoming, kind of how we're doing out there. In the third quarter recap, we've had a little over 20 events in the plaza in the past couple of months. Some of those have had quite a bit of attendance. The East Bank Block Party had about 500. Just recently, we had the re-nesting project this weekend. We had about 150 then. The Zombie Walk, 200 people. And then every single week, we have Family Bike Night. That's still been continuing. Actually think that the riders have been increasing a little bit more than some of these numbers here, but we've had to just kind of guess, because there's quite a few of them. And then beyond that, on the next page, we have a list of some of the events that we have planned for the remainder of the year and also for 2020. Some of these are actually the bigger events that we had in 2019 recurring for 2020. The turnouts were so good that they wanted to use the plaza again. The Gingerbread House Block Party being one of those happening in April. Kegs and Quarks that happened earlier this year is happening again, May 9th. But for the end of this year, we have, coming up in November, the end of November, we have the Shop Small Market. And that same day, we're doing a new, brand-new event that we are programming called the East Bank Golf Cart Parade. It's going to be kind of like a little early holiday Mardi Gras parade for the end of the year that coincides with Rockets Over the Red. Right when the golf cart parade ends, the fireworks are actually going to be going off right at that time, so everybody will be outside having a great time and then see the show. It'll be really fun. Beyond that, I have a little recap of some highlights, some of the higher-attended events of 2019. We had the hot dog lunch, which occurred multiple times. The Valentine's event, Cupid Challenge. Of course, Family Bike Night. We had our ribbon cutting, which was incredible. We had Downtown Clerk's Lunch, Corn Dog Festival. We had our Artini event. There was a trolley tour. The Easter egg hunt was amazing. There were so many people that came out for that one. We had a fashion festival and the Freedom Fest Fridays, which we know we're going to do again this year, too. That was a lot of fun. And I also have some pictures for you guys. These were taken from the East Bank Zombie Walk. Just a lot of families out having a good time. We had some live music. We had, actually, thanks to the Tourist Bureau, we got to put out some games, Tic-Tac-Toe, Massive Jenga. It was a lot of fun. A lot of people came, dressed up, had a really good time. Any questions?
Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
I know you're relatively new to the East Bank District. You've been working there how long?
I've been there since last October, so.
Okay, so.
About a year.
You know, I'm disappointed at what I'm seeing here, like runners and riders. What I see people wanting, and maybe I just haven't articulated myself to you personally, but you're taking more of a role in, I think, programming of the East Bank District, is life down there on a regular basis. Music in that square on Friday and Saturday nights, and we have 70-degree weather even in November. And here, we have this district that unless someone schedules an event that lasts three or four hours, it's just empty. My suggestion would be we pass the street performer ordinance, and that was an attempt to make it simple for there to be entertainment down there. I think it's $55 for a year. A person can go down there and play the guitar, sing, and have just a nice ambiance down there. What I would like to see is for you to read the ordinance that where that was passed, develop a form that a person could fill out with an explanation as to how a person applies for the street performer permit, and post it on the website. We have a pretty good static website that lists and promotes the East Bank District, but nobody knows about the street performer or how to do it, number one. The second thing is we have an app, a city app, and the Bossier Arts Council has a great little calendar where you list all your events that are coming up. On our city app, when I click on East Bank District, there's a static page here that hasn't changed in a long time, from what I can tell. There's no calendar of events. But what I would like to see is when someone wants to come work at General Dynamics or Cyber, and they live in Illinois, and they're poking around seeing what's going on in Bossier City, I'd like them to be able to drill down and see and see the entertainment that's taking place. Now, I would like to see it broadened, but then I'd also like to see it promoted with a calendar. And we have an app. You know, the city has an app. In that app, there's a place you can click for visitors, and it lists things like East Bank District and Arts Council. But when we click on East Bank District, there's no calendar of events.
So we personally actually are not behind most of the programming in the plaza. We manage the contracts for the plaza. So that ultimately comes down to people coming to us wanting to program events. So we do the best that we can there. We have programmed a number of events ourselves throughout the year to kind of fill in some of those gaps. And I think this being the first real year of events, there's been a lot more interest peaking for 2020. We've been getting a lot of feedback on that. People have actually been having a great time down there. Actually, we haven't had any negative feedback. As far as the app is concerned, would I need direct access to uploading things to that app, or do I submit? Because.
Up to Bill Bell or the mayor, as far as that goes. I know one of the issues is when there is an event, there's a cost involved.
Right.
And if there's a lot of people coming, you've got to have security, and that makes a cost, and that makes it tough for a lot of entities to carry on that event. A street performer doesn't have that barrier. If a guy wants to go play the guitar, and you expect six people to stand around and listen to him, it might be 50 people over four hours, but ain't given time. You know, it's just a few people. You don't have all that cost. It's $55. The guy could play the guitar, and you'd have some music down there on every Friday and Saturday night. Now, I'm not asking you to aggressively, I'd love for you to aggressively go out and seek people that could entertain and that would want to have a street performer permit. But I think if the first step is just getting on the website, and I think people will see it, and that once they see it, the ones that want to do it will come to you and program just like you're doing now. But they got to know it exists. Right now, I don't even know that it exists, so.
So to clarify, it is on the website. On our website, when they're looking for East Bank Plaza, it directly links to your website, and if you go to that app, your app also directly links to the calendar. Those are, those are things that we've already sent.
You have to show it to me, because I've looked at it repeatedly and not seen an East Bank calendar. I see the, I see the Arts Council calendar.
So that's a total separate. We have another.
Yeah.
Specifically an East Bank Plaza calendar.
Well, I'll show you what I'm looking at and where I see.
Yeah, I think, I think there may be a disconnect somewhere.
I don't think it's connected to the app. It might be on the webpage or something, but I don't see it on the app.
Okay, well, yeah, we can certainly do that. And then some feedback we've gotten specifically for street performers, because as, well, I haven't seen that many, but when we do, that's something that we promote to them. Hey, you can go to this. Here's the link. It's on our website. Go to this link, and you can fill out this permit. But if they're standing on the street performing with the little change bucket, that $55 is a prohibance to them.
And that's fine. If they don't want to do it, that's okay. I just don't see it promoted, and if it is, let's get together and you show me where it is.
We will certainly make a bigger push.
And then I'll show you where, if I was just a visitor poking around, I don't see it and where I think it needs to be.
Okay.
Robin, I've even spoken to some of the restaurant owners down there and suggested that maybe they host that expense for that street performer, and whether the street performer's performing down in the plaza or in front of their business, encouraging people to hang around the front of, you know, their facility is one of the things that you might also encourage the business owners to sponsor, host, whatever you want to call it, but pay that $55 fee for that street performer, because we do realize that it is an expense.
Okay.
I kind of agree with Scott. Maybe, maybe I envisioned or we envisioned something more down there, but as far as advertising, are you on Facebook? I mean.
We advertise all over Facebook. We have multiple pages on Facebook.
You mean like, you know, it has a place where events coming up, you know, and you see like the.
Right. If you click on, if you click on the East Bank District and Plaza page, and then you click on Events, there's a list of everything, including past events.
I'm talking about just where, you know, you click on one little button down here, and it tells you what's going on this weekend. But I've never seen East Bank on it.
Well, every time that we have an event coming, we also make a post that week as well, and then we push that post. Yeah, multiple posts. And then we also, in turn, share that on the BAC page for the followers of that page. And beyond that, the marketing, like if it's not our programming, if the group that rented the plaza doesn't do a lot of push for their own event, we can't really do a lot about that. We do the most that we can.
Can you, can you seek out people that you know, or if you know any, that can bring things to the, to the East Bank?
Absolutely.
Are you doing that?
Yes.
I mean, as far as, I guess I'm talking more about bands and/or other things, not just bands, but seek out those kind of people?
So here's the, here's the thing. When they come to rent the plaza, we do have that $150 fee to book the plaza, and it's really just, we have actually not really charged that for anybody. It's just because you don't want a free event or free space for people to rent, because you're going to get all kinds of people renting, and I say, so I'm trying to be as tactical as I can with that. So we just put that fee there. We waive it most of the time. If someone's willing to get the insurance and to pay the security, then they're probably on the up and up. on the up and up. But then, after that, they create their own marketing for that event. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm with Bubba. I'd like to see the, if it's booked and it's there, and maybe you said you're doing this, but I've looked, I just don't see it very current. I'd like to see it posted on Facebook and Twitter, and also, you know, where you send out for people following, you get a notification. I've never gotten a notification of an event at the East Bank District. And maybe there's a way to do it, but I haven't, I've never gotten one on anything. So, I do think that would be a good way to...
I've actually never even looked at the page, but I just went to Facebook and searched East Bank District and hit events, and list of every event coming up, as well as Bossier Arts Council, Bojacks Craft. It just took a second.
We share, even things that are happening in the district, if Bojacks is hosting an event, or Flying Heart, we add all of that to the district, to that same page.
Including our theater.
We boost those things.
That's good.
So, I...
Well, I think where we can make strides is filling in the gaps with the street performers.
Sure.
Okay.
That's, I think, my two cents worth.
Then we'll make that our focus, moving forward.
How to add some life. Because there you avoid the rental fee, you avoid the security, $55, just book them and let them go play.
I think at our next merchants meeting, when we meet with the East Bank merchants, maybe we'll have that discussion about that fee wave that you were bringing up earlier, and see what we can work out, and get a heavier push for those permits.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Adopting ordinance amending ordinance number 34 of 2019 appropriating an additional $400,000 from the jail and municipal capital building fund for the installation of a concrete flood wall for the police evidence and storage buildings. Final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. We're missing somebody. Here we go. Next item?
That was a unanimous vote. It didn't show for some reason, but it was a unanimous vote. There we go.
It showed. Motion carried on my...
It's up there.
It didn't do it up on the big screen, though. Adopting ordinance to replace 330 feet of gravity main along Metta View Drive between Voss and Shed Road at a cost of $70,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Horseshoe Construction, Inc. for completion of the work.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Pleasure.
Council, please cast your vote. That one carries?
That one carries, yes, sir.
I don't know why it's not showing up.
It says sending on my side.
It shows up on ours.
Adopting ordinance to declare certain equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need to provide for salvage and disposal according to law. Final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Did you see where it showed?
I don't know why it showed that, but yeah.
But there it is. It's carried.
Adopting ordinance appropriating $150,000 from the land acquisition fund to complete the acquisition and construction of the Walmart Kroger connection project. Final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance appropriating $280,000 from the 2014 utility bond to perform a pilot study to determine if nanofiltration can eliminate enough organics from the Bossier City water to use free chlorine in lieu of chloramines.
Some move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
I have a question.
Questions from the council?
Stacy, could we take this out of the contingency? Do we have, we have plenty, rather than out of the bond?
Yes, sir. That's where Mr. Haydell asked me to take it from.
What?
That's where Mr. Haydell had asked me to take it from.
Well, I'm to wish to override Mr. Haydell's recommendation.
Okay.
Because that's, again, we're getting back to financing something that may or may not happen. It's a study, so...
Okay, so the water sewer, the water capital contingency fund?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you're amending the ordinance?
I agree.
You're making a motion to amend the ordinance?
We wouldn't use bond money for 30-year projects.
Yes. If that's what's appropriate, make a motion to amend to reflect that.
I'll second his amendment.
So, we have a motion and a second to the amendment to change your funds to the contingency, take it out of contingency. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
And then we'll also, hold on just a second.
Make the motion to...
Introduce as amended?
Introduce the ordinance as amended.
So, we've got a motion. Bubba, you second.
I second, yeah.
Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Okay.
Phyllis is having to work on the fly here.
I'm doing it, I'm doing it.
Who's missing?
Mr. Free.
I am not.
Okay.
You were.
Motion carries.
He's right here. Kind of hard to miss.
He acts like he's missing.
Little bitty fella.
Adopting ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations. Final reading.
Some move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. And now we're off to new business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-25 Tinsley Concessions restroom
Counsel, this bid's engineer's estimate is $935,600. The budget is $1,016,000, and it's being funded by the 2018 LCDA bond. There are two addendums. The first made changes to drawings and specifications and provided a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The second addendum answered, provided questions and answers, added alternate specification section, a list of prior manufacturer approvals, and changes to the drawings. The first bid is from Boggs and Poole Contracting Group. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,178,000 even. Alternative one is $8,400. The second bid is from Cochran Construction Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. Bid bond is included. It's for $1,483,000. Alternate one is $9,795. The next bid is from ELA Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,289,000. Alternate one is $90,850. The last bid is from M&amp;M Builders, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,148,000. That's $1,148,000. An alternate one is $10,000 even. Though this amount is over the bid, I still ask that you accept the reading of these bids, so we can negotiate.
So, well, you know, we had talked about this.
Yeah.
So, what do you think?
Well, I mean, what we had discussed was the fact that on these projects, especially with parks and recreation, if they start coming in over budget, you know, then we're going to have a deficit. The money's not going to be there, because each estimate, as I appreciate it, when you add it in total, comes to the exact amount of the indebtedness. So, once we start down this path, I mean, I don't know, do we have to accept these, or can we go back to the...
We accept the reading. We'll review them and see if there's...
Something we can do value engineering-wise, is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so do we need to qualify that, or...
We just accept the reading of the bids, and any change of that will be coming back to the council.
Okay. You good with that?
Yeah, as long as we make sure we come back and let us know what's going on.
Let's come back to this 935 number.
Which sink she, how much did you budget?
$1,016,000.
Yeah. Oh, that's the total. Okay.
So, anyway, that's what Mr. Hall said.
Otherwise, other projects would suffer down the road.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for this...
Yes.
Accepting the reading contingent, reviewing to get the costs down to the estimate. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-26 Sports Complex Tinsley Park Expansion.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate is $12,553,445. The budget is $14 million even. It's being funded by the 2018 LCDA bond. There are two addendums. The first had design changes and clarifications to the plans, provided questions and answers, and signature sheet to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. Addendum two provided questions and answers, made electrical plan and specification changes First bid is from Boggs and Poole Contracting Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $12,843,000. Alternate one is $279,000. Alternate two is $314,000 even. An alternate three is $186,000 even. The next bid is from Don M. Barn Contractor, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $13,600,000. Alternate one is $293,000. Alternate two is for $304,000. An alternate three is $153,000. The next bid is from ELM Group, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $12,958,000 even. Alternate one is for $236,000. Alternate two is $341,000. Alternate three is $151,800. The next bid is from Ratcliffe Construction Company, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $12,190,000. Alternate one is $291,000. Alternate two is $274,000. An alternate three is $139,000. And the last bid is from Testament Construction Services, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $11,989,343. Alternate one is $302,518. Alternate two is for $143,146. Alternate three is $201,544. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second, Bubba.
Mr. Montgomery seconded.
So, we've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin? I'm sorry.
Okay. Question carries.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 19-1686 4613 Voss Drive demolition.
Counsel, this demolition was approved unanimously by the council on the September 17 meeting. There are no addendums. The first bid is from Colton Blunt. 3G, 3Gen Construction.
Say it again. 3Gen.
3Gen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Construction. It's for $29,447.70. I don't know if I said it, but the bid bond is included. The next bid is from Lathan Construction, LLC. The bid bond is included. It's for $17,653. The next bid is from Precision Builders, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $32,400. And the last bid is from Sims, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $22,161. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Introducing ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for repairs to miscellaneous sewer lift stations for a total of $100,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to install a small grinder pump station to service the new Field of Dreams restrooms at a cost of $150,000 to come from the 2016 Sales Tax Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard, McElroy, and Vestal, LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the City of Bossier City, Central Lincoln Arena Fund, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, and Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution adopting City of Bossier City's current investment policy. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution, adopting questionnaire from Legislative Auditor and City's answer there too. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for Battle It Out for Bubba, Saturday, November 9th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt, approve report of change order. First and final reading for South Hardwick Drive reconstruction a decrease of $3,218.70. Total cost of contract with decrease $178,778.30.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a meter reader for the Customer Service Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery?
We're missing somebody.
Did you vote on that one?
Did I?
Oh, man got signed. I'll be with you momentarily.
Thank you.
Got a motion carries. That's all of the formal items on our agenda. I would like to take this time to recognize our clerk, Phyllis. She's been asked to serve on a regional clerk's board for five states. Is that right? And it's quite an honor. And I'd just like to let her know how proud I am of her. Thank you. Any other announcements from the council?
Yeah, also, Friday's Phyllis's birthday and we happened to do it today since we're all here.
Happy birthday, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
If nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.